Welcome to the Iowa City City Council Agenda for the formal meeting in January 21st, 2020. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Here.
Mims?
Here.
Solie?
Yeah.
Taylor?
Here.
Teague?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Weiner?
Here.
All right, well, welcome to your City Council. And we are to your City Hall, and we're happy to see so many people here with us today. I know that we have some individuals who are gonna celebrate today as well from the school system, and I know that there is individuals here that may want to come up and talk to us. I did wanna just, as a point of housekeeping, just let people know that when you do come and talk to us, we'll ask you to state your name, and in the back, there's a little sticker that you can fill out to write your name, so when you go there, you don't have to write it down, you can just stick it down. So I just wanted to give that a little housekeeping piece there for you. All right, so we have some students here from Lemmy Elementary, and I'm gonna come out here and invite you all up to the stage. All right, well, I'm so happy for you all to be here today, and these are students that have been seen as outstanding, and we're excited for you to be here today. I wanna start maybe with your name, so that you can announce it to all the audience.
Abigail Sigafus.
Thank you.
Katerina Satlander.
Mark Elwer.
All right, so happy that all of you are here today with us, and so I'm gonna, I know that you have some things that you wanna say to us, and so I'll probably start with you. And this is Abigail.
Hi, I'm Abigail Sigafus, and I attend Lemmy Elementary. I think that a leader is someone who is willing to help others and to get help from others as well. A leader has to understand that they don't always have to know everything, and they need to be able to admit that they can't do something and to ask for help. Some of my classmates sometimes ask me for help, and I'm always willing to assist. At school, I like participating in activities like Safety Patrol and Student Council. I always enjoy lending a hand, especially when it comes to helping my teachers set up the monthly Science Night activities. In addition, I volunteer at my church with setting things up for younger kids and sometimes playing music in the service. I'm very honored to be receiving this award, thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Abigail. I'm gonna step right in between, and then we're gonna hear from you, Kat.
Hi, my name is Ellen Katerina Satlander, and I'm truly honored to be receiving this award today. Why I think my peers nominated me is because not only do I do things like Safety Patrol and Student Council, but I also love being someone who others can come to whenever they need help. Leadership to me doesn't mean being the most popular or the smartest, it means being kind, respectful, and supportive to anyone and everyone, thank you.
And we are to you, Mark.
Hi, I'm Mark Elwer. The first thing I would like to say is I am very thankful to receive this award. I would like to thank my wonderful parents, my teachers, and my scout leaders, and my peers for being awesome. I think I got this award because I always do what my teachers ask and will provide help to those who need it. I also try to be a good friend to everyone. As my class was discussing what a good leader does and looks like and acts like, I recognized a lot of points from the Scout Law. So being a leader to me is not just about being a good citizen, but also about being a good Boy Scout. Thank you all for listening.
Great. Well, I have to tell you, I'm very impressed with all of your stories that you share with us today, sound like you all are very responsible and very caring individuals that serve our community and others well. So thank you so much for being with us today and being a part of this time, where we recognize and celebrate you. So I'm gonna give each of you a certificate, and I'm gonna read it, and it's the Student Leadership Award, and each one of, each of these will have your own individual names, but I'm gonna read it. For your outstanding qualities of leadership within Lemmy Elementary, as well as the community, and for your sense of responsibility and helpfulness to others, we recognize each of you, and that is definitely recognizing you, Kat, as well as Abigail and Mark. As an outstanding student leader, your community is proud of you, and this is presented today by the Iowa City City Council in January 2020. Thank you so much. That is yours? That is yours? That is yours? Thank you much. These are always great times when we can celebrate our youngsters in our community. Yes, all right, so we're gonna move on to some, to item number three, which are proclamations, and we have two today. The first proclamation, whereas in 1848, people gathered together in Seneca Falls, New York, and cited the unfairness of depriving women of the right to vote, and whereas the right for women's suffrage from the First Women's Rights Convention to enfranchisement lasted more than 72 years, and whereas Iowa women, by the thousands, advocated for the right to vote, and suffragists nationwide turned to public education and persuasion, they held conferences, campaigned, lobbied, marched, petitioned, and suffered public disdain, violent opposition, and prison, and whereas suffragists pushed for a single constitutional amendment dubbed the Susan B. Anthony Amendment, Carrie Chapman Cat led the national movement, and whereas it took male allies and ultimately male legislators to support women in their endeavor to vote, and making it in law of the land on August 26, 1920, and whereas the ratification of the 19th Amendment changed the role of women and the civic life of our nation, and have been making their voices heard at the polls for nearly 100 years, and whereas women are running for offices in unprecedented numbers, many current politicians, both male and female, remember that they follow in the footsteps of these great suffragists, and whereas the centennial anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment represents a historical milestone to be celebrated, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Iowa City commemorates the 100th anniversary of the passage and ratification of the 19th Amendment, providing for women's suffrages to the Constitution of the United States, and honors the role of the ratification of the 19th Amendment, and further promoting the core values of our democracy as promised by the Constitution of the United States, and now therefore I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do here proclaim the calendar year 2020 to be the 19th Amendment's Centennial Commemoration, and Iowa City therefore citizens of Iowa City shall enjoy the freedom of voter participation, continue to fight for voting rights for all citizens, and celebrate this important milestone.
We've got Polly Horton, and Galen, and Tony Warbiter to accept.
Good evening, I'm Polly Horton, I'm on the State of Iowa League of Women Voters Board.
Awesome. And I'm gonna have you come up and accept this, yep?
She has a comment to read.
And I'm Tony Warbiter, a member of the League of Women Voters.
Awesome.
I'm Galen Warbiter, I'm on the State Board and a member of the local Johnson County chapter, and I have this response. On behalf of the 19th Amendment Centennial Commemoration, 50/50 in 2020, the Iowa Women's Foundation and the League of Women Voters of Johnson County, we thank you for passing this proclamation. After 100 years of struggle, the ratification of the 19th Amendment in 1920 was and is a monumental achievement, one that merits attention, education, and promotion throughout Iowa and the nation. The gains, hard won. The status, not done. The future is calling to help learn from the past. The City of Iowa City has heard this call and answered, thank you.
Thank you so much. Whereas on this day, January 16th, 2020, we commemorate the enactment of the Virginia State for Religious Freedom on January 16th, 1786, written by Thomas Jefferson and championed by James Madison. This legislation was the forerunner to the approach to religion and government taken by the farmers of the Constitution in 1787 and the First Amendment in 1789, and whereas today we understand that religious freedom is a fundamental American and human right, we acknowledge that religion, freedom, is a cornerstone of democracy. We declare that religious freedom is not a privilege for the few, but a right for all. We embrace that this fundamental right applies to people of all and of no religious affiliations or beliefs, and whereas we further recognize that the statute insists on equality as a guiding and governing principle, it specifies that one's religious identity or lack thereof should be neither an advantage nor a disadvantage under the law. To this end, the Virginia statute declared, "All men shall be free to profess and by argument to maintain their opinions in matters of religion, and that the same shall in no wise diminish in large or affect their civil capacities." Jefferson later said, "Their religious freedom encompasses the Jew and the Gentile, the Christian, and the Mahometan, Hindu, and infidel of every denomination, and whereas we hold that these principles are not only foundational, but remain essential to the health and future of our democracy. To that end, these principles shall guide and inform judicial decisions, legislation, and public policy-making at all levels of government." Now therefore I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim January 16th to be the Religious Freedom Day, and call on all people in Iowa City to commemorate the enactment of the Virginia statute and its role in shaping one of the highest aspirations of the American experiment, religious freedom.
Here to accept are Ann Ben Dixon and Kenesha Ensminger.
Great, I'm gonna have you all come up and receive this. I'll have you come up, and then I'll have you speak, if that's okay? Great, thank you so much, thank you so much. Great, and then you can go and state your name and please speak.
I'm Ann Ben Dixon. The atheist and nonreligious community of the greater Iowa City area appreciates the city and Mayor Teague issuing this proclamation. As religious freedom doesn't belong to any one group, it belongs to everyone. True religious freedom in this country should be celebrated as something that protects our right to worship, but also our right to be free from religion. In recent years, some have tried to lead us to believe that religious freedom means that they can use their deeply held beliefs to infringe on the civil rights of others. We are hopeful that by having a group of atheists request this proclamation, we can show that this is not the kind of religious freedom we need today. We need religious freedom to be about love, about inclusion, about understanding. By agreeing to issue this proclamation, Mayor Teague, you are announcing to every citizen of Iowa City that the government here respects the religious freedom of all, and that religious beliefs will not be allowed to be used as a weapon in our city. We appreciate that, thank you.
Great.
Hello. As a proud black woman that not only identifies as an atheist, but also as a member of the LGBTQ community, I have seen the dangers that a weaponized version of religious freedom poses, and I'm so happy to see the City of Iowa City step up and say that that won't be tolerated. Being part of these marginalized communities has shown me that the only way our country moves forward is with understanding and acceptance. We can have our theological differences and our political differences, but we must never use those differences to harm one another. Our country is better when everyone's religious freedom is respected. The City of Iowa City will be better when every citizen, whether atheist, Christian, Muslim, Hindu, Wiccan, pagan, or of any other faith respective, knows that they can live freely without the fear of having their religious freedom threatened by the weaponized religion of someone else. Thank you again, Mayor and City of Iowa City.
Great. All right, we are moving down to the next agenda item, which is the Consent Calendar. May I have a motion to approve consent calendars as amended?
Move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Solie?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mayor, I just, I wanted to just comment on, on one of the correspondence issues, is that okay? Just 9F on the Dear Management, we're getting a lot of communication about that, and of course, we had some comment at our last meeting about it, and kind of turned into a he said, she said sort of comments?
Lou, please.
Okay, just talking about our correspondence 9F, which had to do with the Dear Management program, and I'd said we'd received a lot of correspondence about that last time and this time, and I wanted some clarification as to when White Buffalo will be doing the second round, and if maybe prior to them doing the second round, we could have discussion, let's get a work session or something about what we've been hearing and what we maybe should clarify with White Buffalo on our expectations? Would that be possible, or anybody else have any concerns about that? If not, that's fine.
I don't. I think there's some people that are either misinformed or intentionally putting out some false information about what, about White, about what White Buffalo is doing.
Counsel sets the work session agenda, if you wanna talk about it, staff can present. White Buffalo will be back in town, I don't have an exact date at my fingertips here, but I think it's the week of either the 17th or 24th of February, late February, they'll be back to do the final round of sharpshooting. Again, I'm happy to get you information individually or collectively as a group, if you wanna dedicate work session time to that topic.
We can just talk about individually, perhaps? Jeff, thanks.
Okay. All right, we're gonna move on to the community comment, and this is a time where people within the community can certainly come up to the podium there, and we'll ask that you state your name, as well as sign in, and in the back, as I mentioned earlier, there are stickers that you can kinda stick there, and we ask that people keep their comments to three to five minutes.
Hello, Mayor Teague and counsel, and...
Your name, please?
Brandon Ross.
Thank you.
It's a tough question. In the spirit of the day, where we commemorate the 19th Amendment, I'd like to just remind people, we have a council with five women and two men, which I think is pretty special. It's never been done before in this town, that's the most women we've had on the council, I think that's cool. I also saw that, that a woman who spoke previously had a Hawkeye jersey on, and "Go Hawks", "Go Hawks". And our Hawkeye Women Basketball Team has won six in a row, and is now ranked, and every year that I can remember, Lisa Bluder, the coach of the Hawkeyes, has had a great team, and you can't say that about our football team. And wonder why Lisa Bluder, you know, you have to think about, why is Lisa Bluder, why's, maybe she should get paid a little bit more, and maybe the football coach a little less, everybody could be happy, equal pay for women, I really believe in that? So basketball, football coaches, guys, you know, come on, you know, Lisa Bluder is a genius out there compared to some of those coaches. I played basketball in high school and college, I thought I had to mention that. Martin Luther King Day this, this week, I think it's important to remember some things about Dr. King, he did say, but oftentimes, the corporate media just puts it under the carpet that capitalism rewards the few off the backs of the many. Dr. King was a firm believer in this, he believed that capitalism was unjust, and that the working classes, the ones who are really working, and the poor, and the handicapped, and the women, and elderly are all at the mercy of a system that does not work, he believes that. At the time, there was civil rights, there was the passing LBJ's Medicare and Medicaid, there were things that were improving, there was a very progressive candidate, an FDR kind of candidate named Robert Kennedy, who was also unfortunately tragically, just like Dr. King, also assassinated. So I'd just like to remember just those things about Dr. King, and who I believe is, is a great American, and you listen to any speeches of his, now we have access, any speech of his is so worthwhile. Now finally, I would just like to bring up this. To the naked eye, this looks little more than a can of sardines, which council is, in fact, a can of sardines. And I wanna bring up the can of sardines, because I believe that on February 3rd, for those of you who happen to be Democrats, are the caucuses, and that the caucuses should be filled, should be filled with people, so that it's really tightened there, like this can of sardines. Now, some of you don't like fish, I'm okay with that, but, so I am asking the council to do whatever you can to make that day help arms of the government to have freedom for people to be able to say they wanna go to the caucus and, and not have to work that day. Dr. King would believe that we have to be all-inclusive, but the working classes are oftentimes the ones who aren't represented at the caucuses, so it tends to be a little bit of a class situation, so I ask the council, and also private businesses too, out there if you're listening, to allow any workers to be able to, to have this time, just like in the Presidential Election Day. We should have that off. It's great that Dr. King has a day, and we do get that off, and I think that if Dr. King were here today, that he would say, "Caucus Day, everybody should be free to vote, just as, you know, as much as possible, it shouldn't be so difficult, and now we know that with the voter suppressions that go on, we need to push back." So I ask the council to maybe be in contact, or to make that an open statement, that the caucus day, February 3rd, is very important, and people should get out there, whether you're voting for X, Y, or Z, that's not the issue. Thank you so much, Iowa City City Council.
Thank you, Brandon.
I have a comment about the Rochester Avenue thing, should I wait till then?
Yes, we'll bring it up, so if there is an item on the agenda, there'll be a public comment section then, I should have mentioned that. Would anyone else like to make a comment? Saying there are none, thank you all for being here today. All right, we're gonna move on to item number 11, and we're gonna go with 11A, Annexation, American Legion Road. This is a resolution to annex approximately 35.29 acres of land located north of American Legion Road and east of Eastbrook Street. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
And we'll do public discussion. Would anyone like to address this? Mayor, members of council, John Yap, representing the applicant, just here to answer any questions you may have. This was an item that was deferred from 12/17/19, and it actually goes along with the rezonant American Legion Road, which is next on our agenda. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you. All right, thank you. Counsel discussion. Saying none, roll call, please.
Mims?
Yes.
Solie?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Moving on to item number 11B, this is rezoning American Legion Road. Ordinance conditionally rezoned approximately 35.29 acres of land located north of American Legion Road and east of Eastbrook Street, from county residential zone to interim development, single-family residential zone. This is a pass and adopt. May I have a motion to pass and adopt ordinance? So moved.
Second.
And public discussion? Would anyone like to address this topic? Counsel discussion? Saying there is none, roll call, please.
Solie?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Solie?
Yes.
Move final adoption at this time?
Mims?
Second.
All right, move by Mims, seconded by Solie. Public discussion? Counsel discussion?
I just, I just wanted to mention some of the correspondence, if you...
All right, moved by Ms., seconded by Sali. Public discussion. Counsel discussion.
I just wanted to mention some of the correspondence, if you saw the surveys that were filled out by the residents, that was also something that was initiated by Nancy Carlson. I think it's useful on these issues which do impact neighborhoods to have, you know, in this case, a little bit better understanding of what the situation is on the ground for those residents, how they're responding to the conditions, and how this, you know, what's happened on Jefferson Street is affecting them. So want to thank Nancy for doing that.
Roll call please.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Fergus.
Yes.
Ms.
Yes.
Sali.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Next on the item is item number 13.
Mayor, can we get a motion to accept correspondence?
Oh, yes, sorry about that.
So moved.
Moved by Ms., seconded by Sali. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right, we're moving on to item number 13, and this is Rochester Avenue Reconstruction. This is a resolution establishing the design elements necessary to begin design and engineering documents for the Rochester Avenue Reconstruction Project.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Ms., seconded by Weiner. And we're going to move to public discussion.
Staff presentation, I think, first.
Sure.
I have a presentation.
All right, staff, great.
Mayor Teague, council members, my name is Jason Reichert with the City Engineering Division. So tonight, I'm going to go over the Rochester Avenue Reconstruction Project, try my best to summarize what we have done to date and where we stand now with the resolution adopting design elements and moving into design. Give you a little bit of background, Rochester Avenue serves as an important east-west arterial street in Iowa City that sees approximately 7,000 vehicles per day. The pavement has reached the end of its useful life and requires frequent maintenance. Just to give you a little more information, the pavement management software that the city uses recommends reconstruction of this corridor, giving it a city PCI of 24, which falls into the poor rating. That rating is from 0 to 100, so 24 is poor. This project will obviously include complete reconstruction of Rochester from First Avenue to Ralston Creek, and will also include improvements to the sidewalk, ADA curb ramps, utilities, signage, and street trees. The project goals include, again, pavement replacement and utility improvements, pedestrian accessibility and safety improvements as detailed in the Complete Streets policy, and I'll be going over the Complete Streets policy here in a bit, to incorporate bike network improvements as identified in the Bike Master Plan, and to construct all elements within the existing right-of-way and limit properties acquisition as much as possible. Again, this is a brief synopsis of the Complete Streets policy, but I did just want to run through this for you. The Complete Streets is a policy put in place to realize long-term cost savings and improve public health and reduce fuel consumption by contributing to walkable neighborhoods. Implementation of this policy will be through providing, or will be through, you know, be by providing for the needs of all users and abilities in all planning, design, construction, reconstruction, and maintenance activities within the right-of-way. There are exceptions to this policy, but all exceptions must be documented by the city engineer and include supporting data. Complete Streets policy specifies the design of the city's street network will create a safe, accessible, connected grid for all users of all ages and abilities, and also specifies that CIP projects including, or, sorry, all CIP projects will incorporate complete streets facilities, including but not limited to sidewalk, ADA compliant curb ramps and bus stops, and bike facilities. The success of this plan, as stated in the policy, is measured in miles of bike lanes, linear feet of pedestrian accommodations, and the number of projects in which street treats, no, excuse me, street trees are planted. As part of the public outreach process, the design team developed a number of alternatives, all showing sidewalk and bike lanes along the corridor. This was done to encourage discussion on the various design elements we are discussing tonight. It's also much easier to remove elements than it is to add them later on in the design process. So we tried to be upfront and encourage that discussion early rather than late. The design alternatives are presented to neighbors and local stakeholders at three public meetings. These meetings focused on the first, residents adjacent to the sidewalk infill area, the second, residents on Rochester directly impacted by project construction, and the third, just general project area. The project team collected comments on multiple items, including traffic speeds, construction phasing, pedestrian safety, and others, but tonight, we'd like to mainly focus on the three listed here, bicycle facilities, the center turn lane, and sidewalk infill. The bicycle facilities identified in the Bike Master Plan are, and you probably can't see this because it's really small and hard to read, but they are recommended that bike lanes to be incorporated with new construction reconstruction along this corridor. Minimal negative comments were received regarding the addition of these bicycle facilities. However, there was some discussion regarding the need for on-street bike facilities and possibly constructing a wide sidewalk in place of that, however, due to the limited right-of-way width. And if you remember back to the project goals, completing all the design elements within the existing right-of-way, this was limited, or this was ruled out. Next is the center turn lane. As part of the preliminary design process, the consultant completed, or was asked to complete, a traffic study to evaluate the need for a center turn lane. The results from this study show that Rochester would continue to operate efficiently as a two-lane section. However, neighbors stated that they use that center turn lane to access their driveways and expressed some concern about the increased risk of rear-end collisions and if the center turn lane was removed. As part of the evaluation, we did look at other similar corridors. For example, First Avenue is a similar corridor with more traffic volume. There's others such as Benton and Court Street, and based on that, we concluded that there's no reason to believe that there'd be a significant increase in rear-end collisions. I should also state that typically with a slower speed, such as what's on Rochester, 25 miles an hour, you don't typically see the frequency and severity of accidents. I should also clarify that the portion of Rochester from Rita Lynn Court to First Avenue would remain a three-lane section, just due to the school and turning movements into the school and at First Avenue. The final design element we'd like to talk about tonight is the sidewalk. The majority of neighbors immediately adjacent to the infill areas were objected to the addition of sidewalk for the following reasons. Again, this is a synopsis, but these are kind of the main focus, what we feel kind of we can address. The lack of need for additional sidewalk, difficulty accessing and maintaining the sidewalk, and the loss of mature trees. When discussing the project in general, neighbors expressed concern about high-traffic speeds and unsafe pedestrian crossing conditions. Some neighbors believe improved pedestrian crossings should be implemented in place of sidewalk infill. However, these elements may help but are not consistent with complete streets. Based on the characteristics of the corridor, Rochester and the project being located less than a mile from downtown, serving as that connection to the university with Regina and businesses at the First Avenue intersection, the staff believes that additional sidewalk is warranted in this area. The item of difficulty accessing and maintaining the sidewalk, neighbors were concerned about accessing a new sidewalk if it were to be constructed at street level because of the grade separation between the street and their backyards. An option that the design team is looking at is an elevated sidewalk, similar to what's on First Avenue. The First Avenue grade separation project has a retaining wall with a sidewalk on top and a handrail along there. This is a picture of it, however, in this instance, there would not be a retaining wall behind the sidewalk, we'd simply grade to match what's there. The wall height for this option would be six to eight feet at the tallest point. The other concern was maintaining the sidewalk. However, there's similar areas of double-fronted properties around the city, for instance, First Avenue, Secamore Street, and some others where the residents are responsible for maintaining both the sidewalk in their frontage and at the rear. There are a few exceptions to this. For example, Dubuque Street, Bella Vista, near the Park Road intersection, there's a severe grade separation, and those residents are not responsible for clearing their walks. Final concern that I'll be talking about tonight is the loss of mature trees. Neighbors expressed a lot of concern about the removal of excessive, or excessive tree removal. And I'm just going to preface this too, that currently, because we're not into design, this is very preliminary, we're working with the tree inventory, and would need more information about the trees on private property. However, it is assumed at this point that there will be potentially some impact to trees on private property, but again, they're only assumed at this point, and we'll need to get into design to identify all those in greater detail. City staff has consulted since the meetings with the Iowa DNR and the City Forestry Division to identify and evaluate potential impacts to trees. The inventory identified 35 trees in the right-of-way that would be potentially impacted by sidewalk infill comprising of 13 different species and sizes ranging from three inches to 30-plus inches in diameter. Of these 35 trees, 30 were determined to be voluntary, invasive, or have structural issues, or low-quality trees, and five were identified as desirable. There are five European larch trees between Seventh Avenue and Rochester Court. They are a unique species with only 14 in the tree inventory. These trees range in size, these larch trees range in size from 18 inches to 30 inches in diameter, and are good to fair quality. So going back to the Complete Streets policy and the exceptions, does this qualify as an environmental exception? When considering the tree quality and species, staff feels the benefits of constructing a sidewalk outweigh the impacts of the tree clearing. Forestry staff also recommends completing at least a one-to-one replacement with native species, and use this opportunity to plant street trees, which is also a measure of success in the Complete Streets policy. Finally, our recommendation, city staff is recommending council proceed with the following design elements, sidewalk on both sides of the street, on-street bicycle facilities, a three-lane section from First Avenue to Rita Lynn Court, and a two-lane section from Rita Lynn Court to Ralston Creek. That concludes my presentation. Any questions?
What were the, could you turn back to this section? What are the dimensions that are proposed for the, like on the, well, they look a little bit different, the sidewalk widths and the parkway between the curb and the sidewalk? What are the widths that you're proposing for that?
So currently, we show a five-foot sidewalk or a six-foot sidewalk. The sidewalk on the south side will depend on the alternative we select, whether it's a sidewalk at street level or a side, an elevated sidewalk. And also, the parkway width on the south side would be determined at that point as well. We have some flexibility in where we can position that, depending on what option we choose. The north side, we have a little bit more flexibility. And again, I think the intent of meeting the Complete Streets policy would be to plant street trees, so we would shoot for a six-foot width parkway on the north side. That seems to give those trees a little more chance of success because they have a little more room to grow.
Thanks.
Of those 35 trees that you said varied from three inches to 30 inches, do you have any, can you give us any numbers? I mean, like, are 30 of them 30 inches, or?
Fourteen, excuse me, 14 of those trees are less than six inches in diameter, with three of them being candidates for replanting. 12 are between six and 12 inches in diameter, so 26 of the 35 are less than a foot in diameter. There are two trees between 12 and 18 inches, two trees between 18 and 24, three trees between 24 and 30, and two trees between, that are larger than 30 inches in diameter. I will say that of the two trees that are larger than 30 inches in diameter, one is a maple that has very poor structure and has been identified as needing to be removed regardless of if we move forward with this project or not, I guess.
You said, you propose that you're going to do like some kind of alleviate, you alleviate the sidewalk, just the same thing like in First Avenue, that picture?
Yep.
And is this also still going to be like maintained by the resident if you have it like this?
That would, yeah, that would be the intent. The concern of the grade separation would be removed if we have an elevated sidewalk. This elevated sidewalk would then be at or close to the same grade of their backyards.
Okay.
So could you clarify that again? The sidewalk would, the construction would be paid for by the city, but the maintenance of the sidewalk in terms of snow removal?
Would be, yeah, on the homeowners.
Do you have any idea what the cost of the retaining walls and the work that would go into this?
Yeah. Do we have a number? We have a rough number.
My name is Troy Culver, I work for Snyder &amp; Associates, we're the consultant working for the city. We've done some very preliminary looks at the cost. The scenario with the elevated sidewalk on top is the most expensive option, as you might imagine. We're looking at somewhere probably on top of $300,000 for the retaining wall and sidewalks to be included.
And the guardrail is, that would include the guardrail as well?
Yeah, the handrail that would be on top, yes.
So it would have to be a guardrail over a certain height, correct?
Well, maybe wordsmithing, guardrail we would use for roadway protection, this would be for pedestrian, so handrail.
But there's a fall height issue that at a certain point is triggered, that requires a more robust guardrail.
Right. Yeah, it would be, it would be similar to what's shown in the image on First Avenue.
Right, something like that.
And just to clarify, the elevated sidewalk design, the primary benefit of that, or the reason for looking at that design is to match the grade of the sidewalk with the backyards for primarily convenience, or?
Yep, for access and maintenance, to try to alleviate that issue.
For the area that it needed the sidewalk, before that was a sidewalk, and also like this sidewalk will connect?
Yes.
Okay, like people will walk, but there is no sidewalk here, they go to the street, and again, they come to the sidewalk.
So currently?
Or they have to cross the street.
Oh, yeah, so.
That's the current one, right?
Yeah, so in this exhibit, I know it's a little hard to see, but the yellow and green line is the sidewalk infill area.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So the yellow line indicates the areas where there's a grade separation, so this picture.
I see.
So the yard I will say that of the two trees that are larger than 30 inches in diameter, one is a maple that has very poor structure and has been identified as needing to be removed regardless of if we move forward with this project or not, I guess.
You said for, you propose that you're gonna do like some kind of alleviate, you alleviate the sidewalk, does the same thing like in First Avenue?
Yep.
That picture?
Yep.
And is this also still gonna be like maintained by the resident if you have it like this?
That would, yeah, that would be the intent. The concern of the grade separation would be removed if we have an elevated sidewalk. This elevated sidewalk would then be at or close to the same grade of their backyards.
Okay.
So could you clarify that again? The sidewalk would, the, the construction would be paid for by the city, but the maintenance of the sidewalk in terms of snow removal?
Would be, yeah, on the homeowners.
Do you have any idea what the cost of the retaining walls and the work that would go into this?
Yeah. Do we have a number?
Well, it's rough.
We have a rough number.
My name is Troy Culver. I work for Snyder &amp; Associates. We're the consultant working for the city. We've done some very preliminary looks at the cost. The scenario with the elevated sidewalk on top is the most expensive option, as you might imagine. We're looking at somewhere probably on top of $300,000 for the retaining wall and sidewalks to be included.
And the guardrail is, that would include the guardrail as well?
Yeah, the handrail that would be on top, yes.
Because it would, it would have to be a guardrail over a certain height, correct?
Well, maybe wordsmithing, guardrail we would use for roadway protection. This would be for pedestrian, so handrail.
But there's a fall height issue that at a certain point is triggered that requires a more robust guardrail.
Right. Yeah, it would be, it would be similar to what's shown in the image on First Avenue.
Right, something like that.
And just to clarify, the elevated sidewalk design, the primary benefit of that or the reason for looking at that design is to match the grade of the sidewalk with the backyards for primarily convenience or?
Yep, for access and maintenance to try to alleviate that issue.
For the area that it needed the sidewalk, before that was a sidewalk and after this, also like this sidewalk will connect?
Yes.
Okay, like people will walk, but there is no sidewalk here. They go to the street and again, they come to the sidewalk.
So currently?
Or they have to cross the street.
They have to cross the street and?
So yeah, so, oh yeah, so.
That's the current one, right?
Yeah, so in this exhibit, I know it's a little hard to see, but the yellow and green line is the sidewalk infill area.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So the yellow line indicates the areas where there's a grade separation. So this picture.
I see.
So the, the yard elevations are higher than the street elevations. This is where we would propose to install the elevated sidewalk or a retaining wall. And then the other green area is at grade. So that would just be sidewalk, no retaining wall.
Yeah, and it will be continual sidewalk for.
Yep, exactly.
So the residential concern is more west of Ashwood, is that correct?
Yeah, between Seventh and Ashwood is the, is the main area of concern. It's the most difficult to design for because of the grade separation.
You mentioned the goal of having this all within the existing right-of-way. Are we meeting that with the proposed designs?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think there would be obviously some temporary construction easements that would be involved with this, but yes, the, all the permanent improvements would be within the existing right-of-way.
So the city already has that right-of-way access on the southern side where the sidewalk does not exist?
Yep.
Okay.
In terms of ongoing maintenance, am I correct that the, the property owner's only liability is the snow removal and obviously pavement repair like all property owners have? But if there's any problems with retaining walls or anything like that in the future, is that city responsibility?
That would be the city.
Okay.
And actually, I don't know how we would do the sidewalk, the structural sidewalk on the retaining wall. I don't know if that would be, because the only real example that I can think of in the city is First Avenue. And obviously, we haven't had any issues with that yet as it's a new project. So that could be a point of discussion.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Anything else?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And I know that we have some residents that wanted to address this as well. I understand that there's five and there's a presentation that they wanted to do and we ask that public comment is no longer than five minutes per person. And I think you all are well aware of that. And if there's anyone else that would like to address this topic, you'll also be, you're also welcomed as well.
Oh, right. Presentation view down here.
Where?
That one.
Which one?
That little icon there.
This one?
Yep. And then here is where you choose the.
Okay.
And I'll ask you to state your name and then there's also a place there where you write it. Oh, you brought the sticker, great.
Mayor Teague and members of the city council, my name is Nancy Jones. Several of us who are residents of Rochester Court are here this evening to urge you not to approve a sidewalk on the south side of Rochester as part of the Rochester Avenue reconstruction project. Before beginning our remarks, we'd like to thank staff in the city clerk's office for giving us an opportunity to put five comment periods together to allow a more coherent neighborhood response. We'd also like to thank Jason Reichert and others in the city engineer's office. While we have differing views, the engineering staff have been helpful and courteous in their interactions with us. We were not surprised to see that city engineers recommended a sidewalk on the south side of Rochester. In their neighborhood meetings, the engineers were very clear that their job is to implement policy, not to make policy or to make exceptions to policy. Their job was to put forth a recommendation that was consistent with the complete streets policy. We understand that Iowa City has a complete streets policy for a reason. All things being equal, street design should be equitable and consistent and support broader city goals such as being bike-friendly and pedestrian-friendly. But all situations are not equal and not all situations warrant similar treatment. That's why we have a city council, after all, to exercise judgment and to make sure that we implement solutions that make logical and fiscal sense. In the short time we have, we hope to convince all of you that the proposed sidewalk on the south side of Rochester makes no sense by any city yardstick. Sidewalks serve people and businesses. In residential areas, they connect driveways and streets. Iowa City has about 262 miles of center-lined roads and 35 streets which are classified as arterials. Most of the arterials have sidewalks on both sides because it makes sense to put them there given the terrain or pedestrian traffic. Now, let's look at why there isn't a sidewalk on the south side of Rochester. For orientation, this slide shows the area we'll be talking about this evening, this long block of Rochester. All the property along the south side of this stretch consists of backyards that are connected to homes on Rochester Court. Now Rochester Court comes off Rochester at this point, then swings down and runs parallel to Rochester Avenue here, okay? All the properties we're talking about have Rochester Court addresses. All their driveways come off Rochester Court. You see those along here. None are off of Rochester Avenue. Seventh Avenue is here, leading north to a residential neighborhood and Hickory Hill Park and south to the City High area. Ashwood Drive is over here with Regina some distance to the east. Also note all the trees along this stretch, including five historic tamarack larches at one of the Rochester Court addresses. Later, we'll show a slide from the 1930s with the same larches pictured. The distance between Rochester Court and Ashwood is 283 yards, almost three football fields. For arterials through residential areas, it is one of the longest stretches in Iowa City without any driveways or any intersecting streets. There is a very steep bank along the road on the south, on this side, more than 10 feet high in places. So a sidewalk would require a retaining wall along almost the whole distance. And because of the steep bank, affected residents would have no access to a sidewalk from their properties. The affected residents would never use the sidewalk, in other words. Let's see what a retaining wall would look like. For a street-level sidewalk, the only comparable height wall is a short 50-foot section on Dodge Street, south of Iowa Avenue. I drive by this wall when I go to work and I remember any number of times over the years when it was covered with graffiti. The only example of a longer wall is a new one on Dubuque Street, north of Brown Street, which is about 45 yards long. For a Rochester sidewalk, imagine a wall six times as long and twice as high going through a residential area with little foot traffic. The only example in Iowa City of a raised sidewalk, which is one of the options, is the 140-yard stretch on First Avenue for the railroad underpass. Imagine a raised sidewalk twice as long and also imagine, as we will discuss in a later section, the cost and effort required for homeowners to do snow removal on such a sidewalk when they have no access to the sidewalk from their properties. The retaining walls in these three slides make sense because of high pedestrian volumes in their areas and because the sidewalks are accessible for maintenance. Neither factor pertains to the proposed sidewalk and retaining wall along Rochester. In the rest of our neighborhood presentation, we will focus on three main points. One, safety. Two, sidewalk maintenance and snow removal. And three, backyard privacy and tree loss, followed by a brief concluding statement. Now, Michael Hovland will discuss the issue of safety.
My name's Michael Hovland. I live on 1808 Rochester Court. Aside from the goal of following the city's complete streets plan, pedestrian safety was presented by the engineers as the primary reason for installing a sidewalk on the south side of Rochester. Of course, safety is important, but if safety is a major concern for the project, then it's important to discuss who actually would be safer with a new sidewalk. Let's start by looking at who actually crosses the street now. The biggest reason people need to cross Rochester or any other arterial in town is getting to city bus stops. The Rochester bus route alone has 16 bus stops at uncontrolled intersections. That is ones without stop signs or traffic signals. According to Iowa City Transit officials, the Rochester bus route averaged 264 daily riders in the last fiscal year. If you live south of Rochester and want to take the bus into town, you have to cross Rochester to get to westbound buses. If you live north of Rochester, you have to cross the street when you go home on eastbound buses. A new sidewalk does nothing to make it safer for bus riders to cross the street. Who else needs to cross Rochester? Students going to and from school. Any students living in areas north of Rochester have to cross Rochester, most likely at Seventh to get to City High. Any students living south of Rochester have to cross Rochester to get to Regina. Currently, there is a crossing guard mornings and afternoons at the Ashwood intersection, which is the primary crossing point for Regina students. A new sidewalk does nothing to make it safer for the many students who have to cross Rochester. Who else needs to cross Rochester? Seventh Avenue is the primary pedestrian entrance to Hickory Hill Park and there's a lot of foot traffic, especially people with dogs, crossing Rochester from areas to the south. A new sidewalk does nothing to make it safer for the many dog walkers who have to cross Rochester to get to Hickory Hill Park. What do all of these groups of pedestrians have in common? None of their road crossings require a sidewalk. They're simply crossing the street. And a new sidewalk on the south side of Rochester does nothing to promote the safety of the bus riders, the students, the dog walkers, or almost any other group. There's one very small group of pedestrians, probably fewer than a couple dozen a day, that the city engineers classify as pass-through walkers. Let's look at this small group. Because there's no sidewalk on the south side of Rochester across from Regina, pass-throughs heading west would always start on the north side, which does have a sidewalk. Those heading east can cross Rochester anywhere from the beginning point of Rochester to Seventh Avenue. If the small number of pass-throughs know they are going to a destination on the north side of Rochester, why would they start on the south side? And if they do need to cross, they can walk across the street like all the dozens of other people who have to cross Rochester at unprotected intersections every day. I cross Rochester every day to and from work. And I also cross it most days in the summer on, when I head off on my bike. And we can see the existing sidewalk from our kitchen windows. There are simply very few pass-throughs aside from a few joggers, dog walkers, and an occasional pedestrian. So what is the primary safety issue? It, it has to do with things that can be addressed relatively simply and cost effectively. The big problem we have is, you know, speed going westbound down the hill. People don't go 25 miles an hour, they go 40 miles an hour. This is an example of a solar-powered speed monitor on Seventh Avenue, south of Glendale, which would help with that. It doesn't eliminate it. The other situation, the university across from the Penecrest recently installed solar-powered motion detector, flashing lights on the Penecrest. When students start to walk across the street, it starts flashing the lights. There's a similar one on Park Road at Furson where there's a pedestrian-activated crossing flasher at that, at that point. All of these inexpensive, $300,000 for a sidewalk. These things are real solutions to actual problems that we have in our neighborhood. Next, I'd like to introduce Deb Scott Miller, who will discuss the issue of sidewalk maintenance in the summer and winter.
Good evening, I'm Deb Scott Miller. We live at 1820 Rochester Court. If a sidewalk is installed, how would we homeowners maintain our grass boulevards in the summer and sidewalks in the winter? The option of an elevated sidewalk was not shared with residents, so I will address the lower sidewalk for us. Because of the steep bank along the affected area, the only access to our sections of the boulevard or sidewalk would either be from Rochester Court intersection or from Ashwood. Here's how far that is in yards for each of our residents. For Keith and I, we live at 1820 Rochester Court and we would have to walk our lawnmower. 281 yards are almost three football fields in length just to get to our section of the sidewalk. Our neighbor, our homeowner at 1816 Rochester Court, has over 331 yards. Is there any other neighborhood in town where the homeowners have to walk that far to maintain the boulevards of their sidewalks? The situation for clearing snow in the winter is almost impossible. If you have a normal sidewalk on a street-facing house, you can easily access your sidewalk from your driveway. But because none of us have driveways on the south side of Rochester, there would be no way to get a snow blower onto the sidewalk except from the two ends. Think of the logistics of making that happen. Every section of the sidewalk would have to be cleared in sequential order, starting with the two ends. Because the city requires that the sidewalk snow be cleared within 24 hours of a snowfall of one inch or more, the only practical way to remove the snow would be to hire a company to do it. We have gotten an estimate from All Seasons Snow Removal in Iowa City, who stated that they would charge $365 to remove the snow from the proposed length of the sidewalk and if it needed ice treatment, even more than that. For the 11 affected homeowners, each of us would be paying $33 every time it snowed or if snow or ice drifted back onto the sidewalk. It's not unreasonable to think that in a normal winter, we would have at least some sort of ice or snow event every week that would require snow removal. That would be well over $100 per homeowner, per month. And that's on top of what many of the retired homeowners on our block pay on fixed incomes just to clear their driveways and front sidewalks. So they would be paying to clear a sidewalk that they never use. And then where are we going to put the snow? Because there's a high retaining wall attached to the sidewalk, we'd have to throw the snow back into the street, which would become a hazard. We don't have a homeowners association, so if not every household wanted to participate in snow removal, what would happen? Keith and I are able-bodied and if we put on our snow boots and walk 280 yards to our section of the sidewalk to hand shovel it and not pay our fee, it would then fall on our probably more elderly and folks with fixed incomes in order to pay for that snow removal. And that, and with that, they could be paying up to $200 a month on top of what they pay for their front sidewalks. We feel there's an equity issue here. Are there any other neighborhoods in Iowa City where the homeowners are mandated to hire a snow removal company? Or are there any other neighborhoods in Iowa City with this kind of effort and expense to clear a sidewalk and one that they will never use? Another question we have is what about our home resale values? What kind of homeowner effect and expense makes sense to support a tiny number of pass-through pedestrians who can cross the street to an existing sidewalk on the other side? Now I'd like to introduce Wakiza Gomez, who will discuss backyard privacy and loss of trees.
Thank you, my name is Wakiza. I live in 1703 Rochester Court. So I'll be talking about, again, backyard privacy and the loss of the trees in this area. There are 12,676 standalone or single-family homes in Iowa City. People who live in these homes don't live in their front yards, they live in their backyards. Throughout Iowa City neighborhoods, the overwhelming norm is that front yards border roadways and backyards, they either meet other backyards, as you can see in the circled area of the slide there, or they butt alleys. In either case, backyards are protected from street noise. This allows backyards to be the private space that homeowners have for eating and recreation. We did an inventory of all Iowa City neighborhoods and there are only a small number of residences where the front and rear of the homes are bounded by streets, especially arterial streets. And our area is one of these. At present, most of our backyards have trees, hedges and fences that protect us from the noise of a busy street. If you take all of the noise barriers away, we have nowhere peaceful and aesthetically pleasing to go on our properties to spend time outside. And getting to the other, the issue of the trees, I know that was brought up earlier, we estimate that at least 30 mature trees, including some unusual and historic trees, would need to be destroyed to provide room for a sidewalk and retaining wall along this portion of Rochester Avenue. portion of Rochester Avenue. The root systems of other adjacent trees would be seriously compromised in the process and might not survive long. Here's a visual tour up Rochester from Seventh to Ashwood, so you can see what we would lose. That's kind of, you know, that's starting at Rochester Court. So this is the house where I live around, and then the house next door to it. There are the five large, rare, historic tamarack or European larches that were discussed earlier between Seventh and Rochester Court that survived the 2006 tornado that went through the Rochester Seventh Avenue intersection. Here are the same trees, it's blurry, but that's a shot from the 1930s, a 1930s aerial shot when the area is mostly farmland. There, I don't know, you can't really see, but there were eight of those trees at the time, so five of them have survived. If the trees were that big in the 1930s, they may be 100-year-old-plus trees, we're not really sure at this point, which could make them protected, and we're looking into this possibility. Let's see, so the rest of the slides, okay, this is 1718 Rochester Court. We're just sort of progressing through. This is 1804, 1808, and this is where there's a large American elm, a large black walnut hedge, and dozens of daylilies on the bank there. 1810 Rochester Court, 1812, 1816, 1820, 1900 Rochester Court. There's 1912 Rochester Court. You can see one of the biggest sort of trees that we have on the block where the bank begins to flatten out, that would obviously be taken out by a sidewalk there. And then the last one is 1918 Rochester Court. So all the trees and plantings you've seen in the past 12 slides are within the city right-of-way and would all be removed for a sidewalk. To me, and hopefully to most of you, it doesn't make any sense to destroy all the trees in a 300-yard stretch, just out of proportion to the need and the scope of what the city is trying to accomplish here. This would also go against the city's policy of having a more diversified urban tree canopy. Iowa City currently has 2,000 ash trees that will need to be cut down in the next few years. The University of Iowa campus has another 500 ash trees that will need to be cut down. And if you drive east on Market Street, 13 ash trees have been recently removed. So that's almost every tree on both sides of the street between Johnson and Gilbert. All of these tree removals will transform Iowa City for a couple of generations, and not in a good way. No one wants to take down the 2,500 ash trees, but in this case, we have no choice. Why would we choose to cut down 30 healthy, mature trees to make room for a sidewalk that almost no one needs, wants, or would use? With global warming and climate change, why would we choose to cut down any of the trees if we don't have to? And now Myla Grady will make, I guess, the last concluding remarks here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Myla Grady, and I'm speaking on behalf of my mother, who lives at 1804 Rochester Court. Her name's Mary Wasick, she's 91. She was going to come tonight, but the weather was a little bit too difficult for her, especially because she uses a walker. So if we've been successful in these 25 minutes, we will have convinced you that a sidewalk on the south side of Rochester is a solution in search of a problem. We hope that you can look beyond the letter of the law and the complete streets policy, and in your capacity as city leaders, apply judgment and common sense to this decision. There is no safety issue here. The overwhelming majority of pedestrians who need to cross Rochester every day are the bus riders and students and dog walkers who are crossing because they need to get to the other side, not because they are passing through the neighborhood. They will continue to cross the street whether there is a new sidewalk or not. However, we can make these daily crossings safer with the few inexpensive safety tools already described. People often use the iconic scales of justice as a visual representation of how we make difficult decisions between competing viewpoints. Figuratively, we put evidence on each side of the scale. And the preponderance of evidence tips to one side or the other. With respect to the Rochester sidewalk decision, imagine you are placing pro and con considerations on the scales of justice. On one side, put the destruction of almost all of the mature trees between Seventh Avenue and Ashwood. Then, put in the cost of excavation, landscaping, and construction to build a 300-yard-long sidewalk and high concrete retaining wall that will be a magnet for graffiti. Then add the cost to the city of reimbursing the affected homeowners for trees that need to be destroyed. Then add the loss of privacy and increased noise for affected residents, many of whom will lose their total privacy protection, trees, shrubs, and fences. Then add the extraordinary cost and effort that would be required by the homeowners, many retired and on fixed incomes, to maintain the grass buffer strips in the summer and do snow removal in the winter for a sidewalk they will never use. Then, in the other dish, put a pinch of convenience for the very small number of pass-through pedestrians who don't really need a sidewalk when they can simply walk across the street, like all the other pedestrians who cross the street every day. The scales are pretty lopsided. You could balance them simply by saying, "Complete streets policy or not, it makes no fiscal or common sense to put a sidewalk on the south side of Rochester." Thankfully, Iowa City is trying hard to be a green city and a carbon-neutral city. Trees sequester carbon and help us work toward carbon neutrality. Building a sidewalk here and removing so many beautiful trees in the process moves us further away from that goal. Is that what the city wants, especially with all the ash trees that have already come down and all the many ash trees that need to come down? Finally, Rochester Avenue is a gateway road from the east. What values does Iowa City want to project to visitors and residents who enter the city at this point? A quarter-mile of concrete retaining wall that looks like this, or this, or the alternative, a stretch of greenway with canopy, trees, flowers, and shrubs, like this and this. That is the choice, and you can decide to make an exception to the complete streets policy if you believe, as we do, that this stretch of Rochester is beautiful and merits protection. Thank you, Mayor Teague, and members of the council, for listening to our concerns and weighing them carefully. At the very least, we hope that you will ask the engineering staff to calculate the cost of everything that would be required to put a sidewalk on the south side. Then, you can decide if it's worth the human and environmental cost to do so in exchange for so little benefit. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Yes, please step up and, yep.
Hi, my name is Denise Anderson. I live at 200 Windsor Drive on the north side of Rochester. I just want to say that I don't believe that the people who speed through that section live there. They come off the interstate, and then they drive faster speeds right up until First Avenue, and they don't want to slow down. And if there's a safety issue, I would say that that would be it. And maybe we can slow people down, write tickets, get revenue, instead of spend that kind of money for a while. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Peter Rollnick, and I live on the south side of Rochester, between Ashwood and Rita Lynn. And I appreciate the hard work that the city has done and that Snyder Associates has done. And I've been to two of the presentations and listened to them and listened to my neighbors. And first, I want to say that I strongly support everything my neighbors on Rochester Court just said. So I don't need to go into more detail about that. I've sent you each an email in more detail of what I'm saying, except Councilwoman Mims, you didn't get one because your email on the webpage bounced. So you might want to look at that.
We'll check it, thanks.
So one of the things I had wanted to talk about was what they talked about, but they did a great job, so I support them strongly. And I am one of the people who often wants to walk from where I live to downtown, so I am one of those walk-through people. And crossing the street is fine with me, except I want to say an exception here. The issue, crossing the street is really difficult at certain times of day. It's very dangerous. I cross the street all the time to talk to my neighbor across the street, which I think is something you would want to encourage. But it's pretty dicey, because people's speed and the speed limit is not enforced. Also, where I live, and many people have this issue, we have driveways that you can't turn around in. So you have to either back into your driveway or back out of your driveway. You can't do it any other way. And with three lanes, I can back, you know, stand there waiting to back into my driveway, and people can easily go around me, you know, while I'm waiting to get a chance to turn in. If there are only two lanes, they'll have to wait behind me until, well, I don't know what's going to happen, because if they pull right up behind me, then I can't back in. And if the other side is full, you know, having that third lane is really critical to being able to back into or back out of. So I think you should keep that middle lane, even if it means making the sidewalks a little smaller or the green parkway a little smaller. Of course, I want you to make the parkway and the sidewalks ADA-compatible, you know, whatever the rule is, but maybe there's a minimum that you could do that would allow you to keep that middle lane. I am very happy to see a sidewalk on the south side between Ashwood and Rita Lynn, because I use that all the time, and I've been craving a sidewalk ever since we moved in there. So I'm happy to see that, and great. But the problem with the sidewalk along where the Rochester Court people live, I think, can be easily addressed, as they suggested. And also, this would help the safety issue tremendously if you put in a push-button-walk signal at Ashwood and Rochester and at Seventh and Rochester. That would make it, so anyone who wants to walk from downtown to First Avenue or First Avenue to downtown, they can start on either side. If they want to switch sides when they get to that place, they can push-button, cross safely, and no one has to maintain that extra sidewalk. I don't know how the cost of putting in those push-button-walk signals compares to the cost of building that gigantic retaining wall, but I'm, well, I don't know how those compare, but something you might want to look at. So those are my comments. And in general, I urge you to be flexible here. I strongly support the complete streets policy in spirit. I think trying to force it to the letter here is a mistake that will, that is not worth it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Hello.
Hello.
My name's Eric Raely. I live at 1718 Rochester Avenue. I'm on the north side, so basically not directly affected by the sidewalk running up the south side, except I do have to look at the south side. And the idea of an eight-foot retaining wall doesn't seem as attractive as a green space. There's no access to the property, and from looking at the volume of people, the pedestrians going both north and south, it's a very small number of people that are walking up and down Rochester. The students have to get to Regina, and crossing at Seventh or up at Ashwood where there's a crossing guard during schooltimes seems to be perfectly adequate. My one concern would be that kids, you know, jaywalk sometimes don't use the crosswalks, and people don't do 25 miles an hour down that hill. So that, to me, if there's a sidewalk on the south side, people are going to create a safety issue with the possibility of people jaywalking or, you know, running across the street with the traffic, whereas it's a pretty clear intersection at Seventh. And the three lanes does help people getting in and out of the driveways. So it would seem to me that by not putting the sidewalk on the south side, you could rearrange things. The bike lanes are definitely a thing that's needed, but that by not having to have that extra space, you know, we could shuffle everything around and possibly arrange things, you know, to accommodate everything. And I just don't think that the expense, and what you all said was, you know, terrific, but they, about the people trying to clear the sidewalk, it's definitely a job that has to be done, and it's not easy. And if you can't get to the sidewalk, it's even worse. So yeah, that's my comment about the expense and the trouble of having a sidewalk on that side of the street, on the south side. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Kelly, I see you're writing down names, but I do want to remind people to definitely sign in and state your name.
Good evening, I'm Becky Soglin. I live on Rita Lynn Court for the past 10 years with my husband, and we appreciated that we got to meet with the city staff and Snyder Associates on the 16th and learn about the project. And I'm here just primarily to address the section from Ashwood to Rita Lynn Court, the one that you saw, the section in green, which it sounds like there's not a lot of disagreement about. And we would hope you would put a sidewalk there. We understand and recognize our neighbors' concerns about that other, the other segment further down. I think they've raised a lot of important points. But if you could keep that sidewalk from Rita Lynn Court to Ashwood, that allows us, that's the fastest way to get downtown if you are already on that south side, or even if you cross from north to south, the fastest way to get downtown is down Ashwood to Glendale. Because if you're staying on Rochester all the way, you're adding quite, you're adding actually a few blocks. And that's the way most of us go. I sometimes end up walking, and at night, I don't want to cross over again to, you know, I would have to cross to the north side, walk by the woods. I actually, just anecdotally, can say I know somebody who, with their children, does not like walking past the, on the sidewalk at night by the woods. They would like to be able to walk on the south side, so, because otherwise, then you have to cross again. So we would appreciate there. And I realize this is about the main facilities of the lane, the sidewalk. But you've heard a bit about the speed, and having lived there as long as I have, I would suggest that if the speed can be reduced from Mount Vernon to First Avenue from 35 to 25, that that, I think, would go a long way to getting those vehicles to slow down, because you can be going 35 around that curve, if some of you are familiar with it, there's a curve on Rochester, you're supposed to be going 25 there. So you're always, already having to slow down for that, especially when you're inbound. So why not just make that 25? I think, again, it would go a long way to keeping that area safe. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Becky.
Hello there, Austin Wu, USG City Liaison. I would just like to speak briefly in favor of, in support of, the proposed bike lanes in Rochester. I biked on Rochester a few times, even though I don't live in the area, I dog sit semi-frequently there, so often going to and from gigs or houses, I'll go on there. And I would like to second other residents' concerns about the Even though I don't live in the area, I dog sit semi-frequently there, so often going to and from gigs or houses, I'll go on there. And I would like to second other residents' concerns about the speed. It can be a little daunting going, having cars whizzing past. Right now, the center turn lane is kind of nice for cars to go past and passing bicyclists, but I can see very easily, maybe a less experienced cyclist or a child might be more apprehensive about getting on in the current position. So having that dedicated infrastructure and an integrated network is really crucial for getting people out of their cars and onto their bicycles. So I'd just like to support that segment of the project. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to address this topic?
I'm, oh, sorry. I'm Paul Supple. I live at 2103 Rochester. So I'm in the green section, I believe, right? So the green section on the map. So we know we're getting a sidewalk in our portion of Rochester and it makes sense. All the people in Rochester Court, really it doesn't make sense. If you watch the walking pedestrians going by there, they are not going to be going down the hill. There's no reason for them to be doing that. And these guys, it's really putting them out. Those of us up in our section, we're all, like Peter said, Peter, very happy, very happy to be getting a sidewalk in our area. It's good. It'll go down to Ashwood. Makes sense for people to turn there to head to City High, the people coming from that neighborhood, coming up to Regina. And they do have the proper crossing guards in those two places for the kids to cross over. They're stating that there's not enough traffic for a third turning lane. I think that probably means that there's not enough traffic for them to have problems crossing the street. So it's just my two cents.
Thank you. All right. Do you want to have some council discussion? And so, thoughts here?
Well, I will just say, I mean, in general, when staff has come forward with designs and particularly with our policy of complete streets, I've been, you know, fully supportive of that. I think we've heard, at least I feel, I've heard some really compelling arguments from the neighbors in terms of why in that section between 7th and Ashwood, it, we don't necessarily need it. And I was, like I said, I typically come in pretty supportive of following our complete streets policy. And I appreciate your compliments to staff, that they are doing their job, they're implementing the policy that as council we have voted on. And so it's not their position to make those changes. I guess for me, the things that concern me most, and I'll be interested to hear what fellow council members have to say, is, is one, how long of a block that is? And what that means in terms of access to that sidewalk for property owners, residents, either for the snow removal or from, depending on whether it's an elevated sidewalk or not, or also potentially having to get around there with a mower if it's a low sidewalk and you've got grass between the sidewalk and the street. I realize we do have a few other areas, and staff showed that, where we have those kinds of situations in town. But they're few. And I think in many of those cases, one, they're flat, which makes that easier. When I look at this, I personally don't like the retaining walls. I don't, I don't think in general there's a beautiful retaining wall. And certainly not compared to the picture that's up on the screen right now. I know you can't see it as well, but the day lilies. And so when we talk about that that is, is an entry into the community, we have a lot of people that get off the interstate out on the east side and come in through. I'm concerned about the trees that would be removed, even though a lot of them, you know, may be voluntary. We've got some that need to come out anyways. You know, that's, that's quite a few trees that, I realize, you know, 14 of them are under six inches, but you start getting six inches and above in some of those really big ones. If they don't have to come out and there's not a huge benefit for them to come out, it's hard for me to support that. So I'm interested to hear what other people say, but I'll have to say, I'm really leaning towards the supporting what the individuals that live on Rochester Court are saying and not putting in that sidewalk between 7th and Ashwood, so.
When I hear the presentation by the staff, I was really moved by it and I think, like, it makes sense to connect sidewalk over there and sidewalk over here with the sidewalk. But really, after I hear the residents and like see all those beautiful pictures with all these greens and everything, and also I wasn't really picturing it, like where it is, the house is really high and how you have to do this. It doesn't come like click on my mind until you guys saw the presentation, which is makes sense to me. And it's really completely making sense to me not to put any sidewalk there. And also, all the solution retaining wall look ugly, as Mims said. You know, these beautiful flowers can never been compared to the, like, this retaining wall. I will be so bored the resident not to put sidewalk there.
Yeah, this is, we've had, and they were, they were shown, some of these conditions were shown in other parts of the city where retaining walls have gone in. So I too feel we, I certainly, in ideal circumstances, sidewalks on both sides make perfect sense. But I think we do need to allow ourselves some latitude when conditions on the ground suggest a different direction. And sometimes that can just be achieved simply by allowing a certain amount of latitude in the minimum dimensions for the sidewalk and for the setback parkway area. But in this case, it does seem, all things considered, that that section between 7th and Ashwood, and I learned a new term tonight, the pass-through circulation, that was something I hadn't heard before. If this were in a more urban condition, I would say, yes, maybe having sidewalks on both sides are required. But in this location, it just doesn't seem to be necessary. It sort of speaks to the issue that can develop when you have a, you know, property that the backside fronts on a major arterial. That's kind of an unusual condition. And here, I think it was driven by the topography, basically. And it has become kind of a charming landscaped edge, which I think is something that adds character to that part of Iowa City. So I'm, you know, feeling, gosh, that as you tried to explain in your presentation, the cost-benefit on this seems to favor keeping things the way they are on that stretch. I do think the larger issue here for me with regard to safety is the crossing issue. And it will be improved with the bike lanes and the removal of the center turn lane because you'd have less traffic lane. You'd have just the two travel lanes and not three. And the bike lanes would set traffic away from, you know, the curb, which I think has a benefit. The suggestions that the residents made of having a kind of a pedestrian-activated crossing, I think is worth exploring. I do tend to think on an arterial, the one, and yet there's the one on Park Road, when a car is going over a certain speed, it can be, it's less likely to slow down when such a thing is activated. I certainly think this is a good candidate, though, for trying that. But I would also suggest there are progressive approaches we could take if we found that that approach did not work. There are other, other ways of sort of improving the safety through what is, I believe, called a Hawk Beacon. It's a pedestrian-oriented signal, which actually requires the vehicles to stop. So this, to me, seems like a potential opportunity on Rochester because, as was noted, you also have the topography speeding up vehicles that are westbound. But in any event, I think that it's crossing the street that's more the issue because you do have Regina, City High, Hickory Hill Park, many destinations along that corridor where people will be crossing. So I think, again, just let's minimize the impact of the project, make it cost-effective, and then address pedestrian safety with the crossing.
I had a question for staff relating to the, do we have to widen the road at all? Or, I know there'll be some repair.
Yeah, the current plan we show, and again, this would depend on the on-street bike facilities that we choose, but it'd be 11-foot lanes, a wide bike lane, six feet. So we would, I think, widen the street three feet.
And that, and that'll be?
In total.
Okay. Because I know that we're going down to two lanes somewhere, but I guess specifically between 7th and Ashwood, would that, that would be widened as well?
Yeah, that's the one, even though we're going to two lanes, would be wider because of the bike lanes.
So what's that going to do if we're increasing curb-to-curb by three feet?
There are still potential impacts to the trees along the corridor.
Could we not explore, and I know we've talked about this before, where we would have a bike lane adjacent to a travel lane, correct?
And that's, and that's what we're looking at.
Yeah.
So either way, because it's a transit corridor with buses, our recommendation would be 11-foot lanes or a 10-foot lane with a buffer.
Right. Well, I would, which we'd require widening the street to get the buffer in there?
Yep.
Okay.
So either way.
Well, I would, I would personally prefer having the narrower lane with the buffer as the allowing for the bus.
And that would be part of the negotiations with the bike group, too, and see what their preference would be.
So is that additional width going to come on the north side, the south side of the street? Or since we're not actually in the design phase, do you know yet?
I don't.
It would be symmetric.
Yeah, right now, yeah, it'd be symmetrical. I think there would be the potential to look at alignment. But, I mean, be given the limited right-of-way width, we'd be pretty limited. Especially if we're looking at planting additional street trees and stuff, too, so.
So if we don't go with the sidewalk in that stretch between 7th and Ashwood on the south side, we're going to have fairly limited impact then on those properties, on those banks and trees that are already there?
Yep. With the pavement widening and then there will be some utility water main work in the area as well. But it'd be, yeah, with no sidewalk, it's obviously a much less of an impact than if we were to construct a sidewalk with a retaining wall.
Okay.
I have one more question related to the elevation. So from people's backyard, will it be level to their backyards?
Yeah, it would be at or close to the same level. The elevated sidewalk would be at or close to the same level as their backyards.
Okay.
And that's why we proposed that option as an alternative to address that access and maintenance issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. So, yeah, I guess for me, I wanted to know, like, you know, if we're widening the streets because of some of the things that you all definitely mentioned. I, you know, I think the councillors have said it best as far as, like, between 7th and Ashwood, it doesn't, at this point, seem like that's the route that we should go, that we kind of leave it without a sidewalk there. I do think that there needs to be some more exploration by the staff to still try to achieve some of the bike, you know, the master bike plan and all that other stuff. But just wanted to give my thoughts on this. I do think we need to do something different, especially within the 7th and Ashwood. It is important to have bike lanes, you know, definitely. So even within that section that, right now, it sounds like people are not, well, I don't know.
No, we're, I think we're saying, keep the bike lanes.
Yes, absolutely.
All we're saying is, don't put in the sidewalk on the south side between 7th and Ashwood.
Yes, yes.
And the speed is the same?
Right. I think, I think speed and safety are issues that the staff needs to continue to look at.
Yeah. And I would agree.
And I think that speed and safety, once this road has been torn up and put back together, there will have been basically no traffic for quite, for quite some time. And that's an ideal opportunity to put in new safety measures or start really enforcing the speed limit.
Janice raises a good point about the construction. And obviously, part of this is the Rochester Avenue reconstruction, which there's no doubt from what we've seen or heard that, that it's in need of major repairs. And obviously, maybe the redesign as far as the width and the lanes and the bike lanes. But I think what hit home to me was the picture you shared with the scales of justice and balancing that out. And I think, and talking about making an exception to the policy. And granted, we made, Laura talks about policy all the time and transparency, and obviously we make a complete streets policy for a reason because we feel streets in our city are important. And we have hundreds of miles, a couple hundred miles of streets in the city. But we do at times make exceptions. There was a street on, an area on the west side where they were doing the sewer improvements and, and the residents did not want a sidewalk. They'd never had a sidewalk there. And, and we agreed that just do it on the one side and not the other side. So it can be done, especially for something which it's been pointed out seems to be so little benefit, except for those few, as John pointed out, the pass-through circulation that we hadn't heard before. That's the only benefit. You know, you really have to weigh things out. And also the cost, you know, we talked about, there was a phenomenal cost, but we don't know, then somebody mentioned as far as the landscaping and the excavation, there's all those additional costs, too. We're talking quite a bit of money then to add that sidewalk. And I just don't see the benefit.
Well, as the last councillor to speak, maybe I'll just, Pauline gave me a great in to be the naysayer, maybe, or to be the devil's advocate. But I'm just so pleased that the residents are engaging in this process and with city staff and coming out with such an articulate and helpful presentation. I just want to say that, you know, what we're, what we're not hearing tonight for the folks who may wish to walk on the south side of Rochester, and we're talking a lot about the pedestrian, small scale of pedestrian access, which really is forced by the fact that there's no sidewalk there. So I think we just have to make this decision with the understanding that we don't know what the pedestrian volumes would be if there was a sidewalk. And we shouldn't presume that there wouldn't be significantly increased pedestrian traffic if there, if there was a sidewalk there. I also think, you know, we heard from the widening of the street and what I read in our staff report was that the DNR, I believe, gave an opinion that because of the reconstruction, the fact that we're ripping out the street, reinstalling some underground utilities as well as undergrounding some utilities, that there will be impacts on the trees regardless. So I don't want us to make this decision thinking that we're going to save all the trees because the, the improvements that must be done regardless of the sidewalk issue are probably going to impact some of these trees and going to impact some of these, these yards and the nice landscaping. So I just want to make sure that we're being open and transparent about that. It does sound like we need some traffic calming regardless of what happens with the sidewalk on that side. I agree with what Janice said, that this should be a good opportunity to kind of reset people's thinking about driving through that corridor. But this, this is kind of our one shot in, you know, 20 or 30 years. So I don't make this decision or take this decision lightly. I think connectivity for pedestrian access is incredibly important. And when we talk about the, the goal of our climate action plan and balancing the needs and the desires of every person who may wish to pass through that corridor against the few property owners, I mean, that's, that's a difficult balance for me. And I think in my own mind, it's maybe a little bit, it's not quite as weighted as the presentation was tonight. I am, however, very pleased to hear that people are in favor of that sidewalk on the flat grade portion. And I would encourage us and staff to consider wayfinding if we're going, if we're making this decision on the assumption that pedestrians would be then passing through down Ashwood to get downtown rather than walking on Rochester, that we maybe have some indication of that being a pedestrian corridor so that people can see and know and learn that that is the way to walk if they're currently not, you know, maybe they don't understand that that is the best, best way to get downtown.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. I think in a second we'll do a roll call here. And I, I do want to just echo what councillor Mims talked about in a relationship to the comments that the residents made about the staff. I really do appreciate hearing the positive words about the interactions of the staff where they were professional, they were definitely helpful in helping you to understand exactly the, you know, what their marching orders were as far as like the, the things that they have to do as staff. So I really appreciate those words and just wanted to acknowledge our staff and the work that they do. All right, we're going to do a roll call, please.
Why don't we have a motion to amend to eliminate the sidewalk between Rochester Court and Ashwood? So moved.
Second. Is that done?
Moved by Mims, seconded by Thomas. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
You speak the motion.
Okay, sure. So the motion was to approve the, to approve the resolution minus the sidewalk between 7th and Ashwood.
Actually, what we did was amend the resolution. And so now we're going to do a roll
Actually, what we did was amend the resolution, and so now we're gonna do a roll call on the resolution as amended.
Okay, all right. So roll call as the, as the resolution is amended?
Yes.
Do I have a motion for that?
We already have a motion.
Oh, we already got the motion from the beginning. All right, great. All right, roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Memms?
Yes.
Sali?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Yes. All right, motion passes seven to zero.
I'd like to say thank you to the neighbors.
Yes.
For putting the time and effort that you did. That's really helpful for us, very much so, so thank you.
Well done presentation.
Yes, it was.
Eyes on the ground, case by case.
All right. We do have correspondents. I wanted to have a motion to accept correspondence.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Sali, seconded by Memms. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right, moving on to item number 14. This is council appointments. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. We have 14A Parks and Recreational Commission. One vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment, December 31st through 2020. And we only have the one today, so as far as new, so.
Of the three, I thought Alex Hackman, I'm not sure how to pronounce his name.
Yes.
Yeah. Kind of showed the most engagement with our parks and rec and maybe the most knowledge of, so I would support Alex.
I was going to say the same thing, Susan, I just, I was impressed with his, his application. A lot of thought into what he can bring to the commission with his experience, and he's spent a lot of time attending meetings and reading past minutes, and he really seems to have an understanding of what the direction of the commission really is. So I would approve of Alex Hackman.
I would as well.
Okay, I'm seeing some nodding of some heads, so, all right. So a motion to appoint Alex Hoffman.
With the motion?
What? Move?
Yeah, so move by Sali.
Second.
Seconded by Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 15, announcement of vacancies new. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. This is Civil Service Commission, one vacancy to fill a four-year term, April 17th, April 7th through April 1st, 2024. Applicants must be, applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, March 17th, 2020. And then, item number 16, announcements of vacancies previously stated. This is Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. Moving on to item number 17, and this is community comment, and we're gonna call up, I don't know if it's gonna be you, Austin or Charlotte.
Hello again, Austin Wu, USC City Liaison. The reason I wasn't here earlier was I actually have a class this semester from 5:00 to 6:20 PM.
All right.
So I'll actually be gone for all of them. But anyway, first, I'd like to say congratulations to the new faces and positions up front, so Janice Weiner and Laura Burgess, congratulations, nice to see you guys out there, as well as congratulations to Mayor Bruce Teague and Mayor Pro Tem, Mazza here Sala. I'd also say welcome back all students to the new semester, started off today. And there's a few upcoming university events of note already. Anita Hill will be speaking at the Iowa Memorial Union on Thursday, the 23rd, at 7:00 PM, presented by the University Lecture Committee. Spectrum UI will be hosting the 15th Annual UI Drag Ball at the IMU Main Lounge from 10:00 PM to 12:00 AM on Saturday, the 25th. And Hawk the Vote, the Public Policy Center, Political Science Department, and UISG will be hosting a mock caucus on Friday, the 31st, from 7:00 to 10:00 PM, also at the IMU Main Lounge. And there, hot coca, snacks, and prizes will be available. That's all I have. Thanks.
All right, so we'll do city council updates. So we'll start with councillor Taylor.
Well, it was unfortunate that some events over the past week or so were, were canceled or postponed due to the weather, but there still were a lot of MLK events, and I applaud the folks who were hardy enough to walk from East Dale Plaza to Mercer Park. I have to be honest, I drove, and then it wasn't really that cold, I could have walked. But, but it was a great event, very well attended there at Mercer Park. Congrats to all the organizers for that. And then, of course, the event at Bethel AME Church apparently was well-attended also and a good event. And Austin touched on the Anita Hill, there's several, I'd encourage people to look at the calendar, it wasn't just yesterday, Monday events, there's many events going on throughout the rest of this week and into February for, to honor Martin Luther King. There, somebody touched on, I think Laura touched on, the reception for Mark Nolte that was to have been last week, but the weather, impending weather, it was starting to get pretty icy by the time it was supposed to happen, so I, as well as several other people, really didn't attend that, but I offer my congratulations to Mark and wish him well. It seems to be a time for people leave because I see Simon out there, he'll be leaving us soon and going on to better things, which means that the person he's replacing there, Mary Ann Dennis in the Housing Fellowship, we're gonna miss her a lot, but good luck to Simon and his new position there. This Thursday, oh, speaking of Simon, also, he's our ADA compliance person, and this Thursday, I've been invited to join a group of individuals that are going to plan the ADA celebration this year, because this is, it doesn't seem that long, 30th anniversary of, of the ADA, the actual ADA. And so they're planning a big event, would either be late summer or possibly this fall. We'll be talking about that at the meeting this Thursday, so look forward to more information on that, that'll, that'll be fun. I want to remind people about the street parking and with the snow emergencies, please be aware of that, you don't want to be towed, so just be cautious of that with any snow emergencies, which are, I'm not looking forward to the rest of the week, possibility of that, so, and also, while on that note, thank our street crews for the hard work they have been doing over the last week or so with our, with our storms. And also, on the note of winter, encourage people to look up into the trees because the eagles are back, and it's really, the one nice fun thing about winter is seeing the eagles, it's really a beautiful sight. Not while you're driving, please, when you're stopped at a light or something, but, but notice the eagles because there's a lot of them this year.
I would like to echo what Pauline said about the MLK events, the, I did actually walk, and it was, it was, as, as I believe the, the mayor and Mazza here did, it was, it was chilly, but perfectly, it was, it was, it was walkable, thanks, in fact, to the, the police liaison who, with others, led us on a vehicle on the streets as opposed to having to walk on a couple of sidewalks that, for some odd reason, had not been cleared. But the events at Mercer Park were really wonderful, to see probably 100 people making literacy packets for kids, people of all ages, making those packets was really wonderful, as, as well as many of the sentiments. I was at Bethel AME as well, wonderful service. I also attended on the 16th, the, the South District Voter Engagement and Registration Event, which was really, entailed enormous numbers of hours of organization by J-Kick, a number of the religious communities in town, combined with various civic organizations, really did a terrific job in putting, in putting this event on. I really appreciated the fact that they, they, they had translations of materials into five languages and interpreters there for all who, who needed it. So a tremendous initiative, and I hope it won't be the last time.
I just echo what the other councillors have said about the Martin Luther King Junior Day celebration on Monday, and just thank the mayor for being someone who sings, because I will say that that was a fantastic aspect of, of the event, was, was all the singing, so I'm all for that. And was gonna echo what Janice said about the voter engagement event, it was just tremendous and really exciting to see people being empowered and registering and having, again, the people who are having their assistance with having their voting right restored. This Saturday, I'll be attending the Iowa City Area Chinese Association New Year Celebration at the Corville Performing Arts Center, and those are all my updates.
Well, I, I will just mention that this coming Tuesday, a week from today, on the 28th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Iowa City Public Library, will be the Transit Study of the Route Changes, so those who are interested in that, this would be the time to attend. And hopefully the weather, although it sounds like it's gonna, it's not gonna be cooperating, but boy, it, certainly from my perspective, anyway, really does put a damper on what I would like to do, because it's just, you know, discouraging out there. So I'm happy to hear that some of you were, nevertheless persisted.
Yeah, the MLK event at Mercer was great, just to see so many people there and such diverse ages and so many different people performing and celebrating, so that was, was a great event. And, yeah, I just, I'm glad you mentioned that Transit Study Meeting on the 28th, they'll be out of town, but hope people can get to their, get there and hear what, you know, what's going on and give any input at this point. So it's, just encourage people to be really safe out there, there are still a lot of icy spots, both on the streets, I discovered today, no accident, coming down Washington Street to Gilbert is a little icy. And sidewalks, too, even though people are trying to do the best they can, just, just be extra careful, and especially, you know, as you're driving, be cautious with people on the sidewalks or trying to cross streets, so.
Okay, I think I become better on, like, really highlighting or remembering what I was doing the week before, and I was writing it down. Okay, same thing, like, on the 16th, I guess when I, I don't wanna, I guess, repeat it, but I was there, too. It was a very nice day, and especially the translation was great. And also, I guess tomorrow, we have the City Manager Round Table Meeting, and we're gonna be attending on the 23rd. The mayor and I, we're going to DC to attend the mayor conference. And on the 30th, Iowa City Federation, they have their Achilles Summer, everybody's invited. Okay, the, also, the 1st of February, the Black History Month, Bruce and I, we're gonna have the mayor, mayor, bro, and meet and greet, and it will be at the Multi Generation Center, which is owned by Bruce, and this is public, anyone can come. Yeah, from 3:00 to 5:00, please note your, and come. And of course, we have the caucus on the 3rd, please don't forget that, that's a very important thing. And that's all I have, I guess, yeah.
All right. And lots of the events have already been covered, I just wanted to make one, mention one thing about MLK, since yesterday was the celebration, MLK Day. One thing that he said was darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. And so just think about, what are we doing for others, is one of the key things that I've been saying to people. We have the opportunity to do whatever we need to do to make our world and our community a better place, and so the, the events of Dr. King Day was amazing in our community, and it's been going on for a week and it continues. And Maz did mention that we're gonna be going to Washington DC for the Mayor's Empowerment, Mayor's Innovation Project, and we're happy because we have a meeting with Senator Grassley, and so that'll be taking place on Friday, so we'll have some opportunity to meet him, and maybe there'll be a few things that our city would like to definitely just mention very lightly. But I want to go to staff to see if you all have any updates and things to share.
Two quick things. I had made a mistake in my summer meeting schedule memo that we discussed earlier, so if you can just scratch, you know, scratch those dates, I will get back to you and your next packet with a new suggestion. I think it'll look much the same, probably two meetings in June, one in July, but the, the weeks will be off a little bit, so I apologize for that. And then I also wanted to acknowledge Simon's last meeting, although, of course, you're welcome to come any Tuesday night, Simon.
Simon and I started at the same, roughly the same time, eight-plus years ago. I really don't know City Hall without Simon in it, and I'm kind of terrified to think of what City Hall's gonna be like without Simon in it right now, because he's, he's just been such a great partner in the, in the city manager's office. So while we wish him the best, we're certainly gonna miss him.
I don't know what City Hall is like without Simon either, so I wish you the best, and we'll miss you.
We miss you, too.
All right, Eleanor?
I do know what City Hall is like without Simon, it's much better with Simon, you know.
And Kelly? All right. Great, well, we will definitely miss you, Simon, and I'm impressed with your, your knowledge, like, it just rolls off your tongue. All right, be it there anything else for tonight, then, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Sali, seconded by Weiner, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.